Hi, I'm Tatum Skipper and welcome to Real Florida Magazine.
Welcome back here today on the beautiful campus of Florida Panhandle Technical College, another in our series of Meet the Candidates. Now that we're past the primary election, which occurred on August 30th, we're starting our next round of all the candidates who are going forward to the general election, which happens on November 8th. And over the next couple of months, you'll have the opportunity to at least virtually meet all of the candidates who will be opposing each other on that November 8th ballot. Here today is James Guy, who is currently a candidate for Washington County Commissioner, District 5. When we come back, we're going to talk to James about how the campaign's going so far. James is NPA, no party affiliation, so he wasn't embroiled in that primary process. But now that we're past that, James is on the campaign trail. He's going to have this opportunity to virtually meet you through this show and explain to you all the reasons why he wants to be your next Washington County Commissioner, District 5. We'll be right back. Welcome back. As mentioned, our guest today is James Guy. How are you, sir?
Fine, thank you, Paul.
You are a candidate for Washington County Commissioner, District 5. You've been on the show already, actually a couple of months ago. We just got through with the primary election, so the field has thinned out. Some races completely decided, sheriff's race, for instance. District 1 county commission with both Republicans. So Alan Bush is keeping his incumbent's position there as the commissioner. You are in District 5. Now, when we started off, we had a total, I believe, of five candidates in District 5. We've had the Republican primary, and so you had Lynn Gothard, Ron Jones, and who else was in that?
Steve Joyner.
Steve Joyner. I beg your pardon for Steve and his family. I apologize. Steve came out of that victorious. Lynn Gothard was the incumbent, had been there for one term. And Steve won that Republican primary. So now, we're faced with the remaining three candidates, Steve being the Republican, John Harmon being the Democrat, and you being in that NPA or no-party affiliation position. You actually have been a registered Republican in the past.
That's correct.
But changed to NPA so that you could run in this race and be assured you'd go all the way to the general. For those who haven't had the opportunity to hear your other interviews, let's start at the beginning. Let's talk a little bit about James Guy. Talk a little bit about you, your family, your history in Washington County.
Okay, be glad to, Paul. First of all, I was born 71 years ago, right outside of Wausau on Pioneer Road. My family roots are scattered throughout Washington County, being here over 200 years. I have relatives in every stem of our family tree. I also moved back here from Pensacola in 1984. I am retired as a general contractor. I worked with the state in the brain and spinal cord injury program for the last 25 years. I'm retired from that. I also retired from the post office. And so now, I am the chairman and founder of a nonprofit organization called Shepherd's Gate Church Incorporated. And our main function is supplying food and other necessary things to the elderly in this county and people who are, no fault of their own, have come into an emergency situation where they need food, they need assistance. And I formed this corporation about six and a half years ago. And currently, we give food out to approximately 600 families in Washington County. That ranges from Caryville on the west side, Alford on the east side, down to Greenhead on the south side, and Ebro on the southwest corner of the county. So we cover the entire county. We also do handicap ramps for elderly and people on hospice. We work with the Health Department here in different facets and areas. And also, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Council on Aging. And I just, I have a love for the people in this county. And my main reason for running is to represent the people, not a party, but the people in this county. And I believe that because of past situations, that the people really haven't had the voice that they need to have as Americans. And I believe it is my opportunity to be their spokesperson in this area that we live in called God. A lot of people call it God's country, but I say that it belongs to the people of this county, and I think they need to finally have true representation. You know, Paul, our country is a republic, which means it's not a democracy, it's a republic. And the way the republic works is, a group of people, they elect one person to represent their views in all situations concerning the area where they live. And so when I go there as county commissioner, it will be to represent the people in District 5 and also in Washington County. I think the waters are really muddy there. Do I represent just 5 or do I represent the entire county? I represent the entire county. If the entire county votes on me, I am now responsible to the entire county.
Addressing the party affiliation, do you feel that in some part anyway, that the Republican and Democratic parties have sort of left people behind? That people are disenfranchised, don't feel that tight? You know, at one time, people identified as a Republican, as a Democrat, and they were very fervent in their views, in their support of those organizations. But we've almost gotten to the point where we're voting more for the person than for the party. At least I am personally. And so when you explain why you decided to run as a no-party affiliation, it kind of makes sense that, again, with your philosophy of supporting and representing all of the people in Washington County, that you don't want to do it at the expense of any group or special interest.
That's correct. That is exactly correct. Well, we can look at the country. We can see the division. We've got Mr. Trump on one side of the spectrum, Hillary Clinton on the other side. And we can look at this and say, my goodness, this entire country is in total disarray, is in total confusion, and it seems like one party is battling another party for superiority. And where are the people here? Is one party against another? Where are the people? It's time, the reason I'm running is to be a voice for you. Now, if you don't want me to be a voice for you, then vote for another candidate. But if you really want someone to represent your views, then you need to vote for me. Because I will represent your views, not my own, not the Republican Party, not the Democratic Party, but your views. We've got to take this county back into the control of the people.
I think that what's exciting to me anyway is the fact that we're looking at, when it comes to county commission, the opportunity for us to have a preponderance of business people in those positions, being able to make qualified, quantified decisions based on sound business practices. And I think it's very important that the county be run as a business, as a successful businessman yourself. You have to be looking at this a little differently than someone who's never operated a business before.
That's correct.
What do you bring to the table as it pertains to that and anything else that will make you that county commissioner, of whom I'll be proud and who will represent Washington County in the way that we really need?
One of the things as a businessman, when I first started out in business close to 47 years ago, the first thing I found out is, if you borrowed money, you're in debt to the person that you borrowed money to. This county has got to get out of debt. And one of my main things is to get this county out of debt within the next four years. We need infrastructure around, I know we've talked about it and everybody said it, but nobody does nothing. They don't do anything about it. We have to have the infrastructure here. We also, in statistics, will show you that all the growth, it seems like, in Washington County is on the south end. All the proposed growth is in the south end, towards Ebro, towards Greenhead. Where are the plans for the infrastructure there for those people coming in? There are no plans. And being a county commissioner is not taken care of every day. Our job is to set policy, is to not put our finger into everyday workings. If we've got people working for the county who are supposed to can do these things and be the contact person for the people, let that person do his job. Let the county commissioners do ours. The main thing is, the county commissioners have been more personalized to certain groups of people than they are to the entire group of voters in this county. We have got to start setting the policies and then stand behind it to make sure that they're enforced correctly.
Presuming that all five of those county commissioners have the best interests of the people at heart, are all qualified for the position, and are all pure of heart, mind, and spirit, but if at the end of the day, they can never work together, if there's always a 3-2 split this way, or sometimes another way, or sometimes a third way, how do we ever get anything from a long-term planning point of view? And you point out the fact that there are no long-term plans, and I think that's one of the biggest glaring things that I have seen for many years. And in order to do that, you have to have teamwork, you have to have the ability to work together, not just on any individual issue, but long-term. What do you bring to the table to ensure that that sense of teamwork, that that cooperative spirit will be maintained and, over a long period of time, at least the four years that you're there, we can truly make strides along the lines of long-term planning and growth?
You know, you can be totally right in your view of anything, but if you can't get the others to work with you, you being totally right avails nothing. You've got to have the proven ability to bring four different mindsets into agreement for a common goal, not giving up anything, but coming in agreement on certain things to go forward. And that's what I bring into it. I have the ability, proven ability, to take five different mindsets, come together in unity, and to accomplish what the people need to have accomplished in this county. It will not be done in one meeting or two meetings. I believe this is a four-year project, or maybe even an eight-year project. But I promise the people, if we'll start working together, a group of proven business leaders, we can bring this county out of debt. We can promote the new jobs for our people who go off to college and have no place to work here. We have plenty of other jobs for people in trade schools, because we've got openings all over the county, all around us in other counties. We can't even find enough people. But it's that certain group of people that go off to college and spend thousands of dollars to get educated, they have no position to go here. We need to focus on that area. I have the ability to bring people together, not in confusion, not suing each other, but in agreement for the benefit of the people of this county.
All too often, availability is mistaken for ability. And just because somebody is available and has the time to be able to sit on a committee or to head up a board or to be the titular head or director of a segment of one of our governmental agencies, that they then get that position. That said though, it's easy to be that Sunday morning quarterback. It's easy to sit back and pick apart other things. I certainly accept that completely. And until you sit in those seats, until you take on those responsibilities, until you fight those fights, you really don't know 100% about what some of these people are able to accomplish or what their abilities are. Now, that said, given four years, or eight years, or 12 years, and still nothing being accomplished, I'm of a firm mind that you need to erase that blackboard and start again.
That's right.
So number one, I don't think that people should stay in any position for very long, frankly, because you become a career politician, and that's the problem that we have on a federal level.
And I am for our term limits.
Even for county commissioner?
Even for county commissioner.
Have we ever had a situation where somebody sat there that long to begin with, or are we just so fickle that we keep changing them anyway?
I think we're so fickle, we keep changing them. Because we're dissatisfied with the performance of the person four years ago who promised us all of these things and accomplished none of them. You can come and sit at a county commissioner meeting and say yes or no to any given subject. But the thing is, are they really informed about what's going on? And unless you bring something positive to the table to help the people of this county, then just showing up means nothing. You've got to be proactive in what you do. You've got to be informed of what you do. You've got to go out, if you're representing District 5, you've got to go out into the community and find out what the people in your district think. And if they are not thinking the correct thing, then it's our responsibility to inform them of everything that's going on. And I don't see that happening. I haven't seen it happening in this county in the last 12, 16 years. And personally, I'm really sick of people representing me who don't represent me.
What do you see as one of the more glaring issues? And for the sake of time, because we could talk all day about this, and it would be interesting conversation. But for the sake of brevity and for this show's format, what is one of the more glaring problems or maybe opportunities that the next sitting county commission board will be facing that will require some of that teamwork, some of that cooperative spirit, and hopefully cooler minds prevailing to be able to deal with?
One of the things that is really prevalent and on a high order is, we've got over 350 lots in Sunny Hills. We're not real estate agents. We need to formulate some type of plan to either finance those lots, sell them to building contractors or whatever, so we can start getting taxes off of those 350-something lots. Take the initial money we make out of it, pay towards that debt, I was saying. Let's quit becoming landowners. We are servants of the people. And we need to take that and look at everything that we've got to get us out of this debt that we're in and to eliminate the areas where we can make money, but we don't. We need to take every available avenue of creating resources, financial resources in this county, and take that and apply it to our parks. Take that and apply it to so many of these needed projects where we've, for the last eight years, said, we don't have enough money to do this, or we don't have enough money to do that. We need to examine every resource, talk it over with the people, have the mindset of what the people want, and then go in and make a educated decision of what to do next.
The 350-some lots that you allude to in Sunny Hills, I'm presuming that those were reverted to the county because of non-payment of excise taxes?
That's correct.
What, do you have any idea, average value per lot or the aggregate value of those 350 lots ballpark? I mean, would it be fair to say that they're worth $3,000 to $5,000 apiece, or $10,000 apiece, or what would be the?
Four years ago, they were worth 50% less than what they are now. We are now in the prime time for selling property.
But dollar figures, ballpark, what are they worth?
If you're closer to a main thoroughfare, if you're closer to a pond, if you're closer to the lake, $35,000. If you're closer to the main drag, El Cam, Sunny Hills Boulevard, $5,000. Now, if you're offbeat, I have family members that own three lots right on a golf course. Eight years ago, we were offered $125,000 for them, and we didn't take them. But right now, they're only valued for $5,000. But it's going up every day. So I think out of the 357 lots, that we could clear $750,000 or a million dollars. But when we clear that initially, we also create the same amount of money on taxes off of those $35,000 lots. So we're talking $750,000 extra a year into our budget that we have, we should have been having this before, just for the tax purposes. But they didn't. They decided not to sell them because the prices were so low. But you know, there's more than initial prices to be looked at in this. If we'd have had the taxes off of those 350-something lots for the last eight years, I would like to calculate and see how many millions of dollars we'd have in our budget.
Well, you could give the lots away and collect the taxes and be better off than you are owning the property.
That's right. You'd give the lots away and take the taxes.
In all fairness, and to play devil's advocate to what you're saying, has not the debt been reduced over the last four years?
Correctly, it has. It has. But the reason that it's been reduced is that the economy has changed 100%, but we need to operate this county not like we're going to be in the land of plenty forever, but be prepared for those times which are coming, and it's going to go back to where we won't be getting as much excise taxes. We've got to prepare to be able to meet those needs for those years. And here's the thing that scares everybody, and that's the word budget. Let's don't budget for the future. You know, it's like going to a dentist without painkiller. You know, the word budget just scares everybody. But when, if we will make preparations, I know we paid, and I commend them for that paying, they've taken this excess instead of throwing it away, they've actually started paying the debt. Well, start paying the debt is not good enough. Paying it off is what we need to do. Most people cannot tell you when that debt started and why the debt actually came into existence, but I'll tell you, it started in 1992, when mandated that we had to close the garbage landfill on Mud Hill Road by the government. We had to borrow the money to fit that mandate. But since 1992, we have been borrowing more on the debt, more and more, every time. But sometimes you just have to tighten your belt and not borrow money. Anytime, and I'll say this, the Bible tells us that we are a slave to the lender, and I believe everything in that Bible. So as long as we owe money, we're indebted to the people we owe the money to.
2003, '04, '05, we were hit with a perfect storm. We had the oil spill off of our coast, which affected tourism. Many of those workers in that hospitality industry coming from Washington Jackson Holmes County. We had several hurricanes during that same period of time, again, impacting tourism, impacting our whole area in many ways. And then we had the bubble bursting or the economic problems, and again, that affecting everybody. Taking that into account, starting in 2005, we didn't see that development, and there's a good reason for that. That said though, arguably, there has not been much in the way of economic development in our county over the last 15 years. And when we ask people, what economic development have we seen, we're still holding up things like Walmart and West Point Home and the interstate.
That's correct.
And some of that stuff going back many, many years. I say that not to slam anybody, but rather to say, okay, on a positive note, where do we go from here? What can we do? What can we do to start working towards? It would be unfair of me to say, James, what are you going to do to bring jobs into Washington County? Because frankly, you cannot do that by yourself. Nor can you promise anything of that sort. But what you can tell me is how, what plans have you thought about? What can James Guy do, if you're a Washington County Commissioner, to at least start that process so that, looking down the road, again, that long-term concept, what can we do to start working towards economic development, true economic development in Washington County?
We've never had the transportation availability in our county like we have now. With the widening of Highway 79 and with the widening of Highway 77, we now have access to large companies, their ability to come in and leave with no problem. And we finally got to a place, but the main thing is, we need to have credibility in the leadership of this county. We don't need to be fussing and fighting and be putting on TV and arguing and be in lawsuits. And we've got to come together as a group of grown individuals who God created so we can get along and make a company want to come here. The Chamber of Commerce, the county commissioners, the city of Chipley, the city of Wausau, the city of Vernon, the city of Ebro, we need to start going out, not just talk about going out, do whatever it takes to go to these people, these opportunities. If you're a businessman and you were an executive of a company, if you decided to change jobs or wanted to move to another town, they hire a company or an individual called a headhunter. This headhunter, he does everything for you. Finds the right location for you, and he charges you a fee. And I haven't checked into it, but I promise you, there are companies that work in the behalf of counties to try to influence people to come here. We need to get in touch with one of those companies, work in our behalf, and find a company or a group of companies that want to come to this area because of whatever we have available for them, fits within their scheme. And don't try to lure people who we can't accommodate. Only lure those companies that are beneficial to them and to us. And I think the, everybody's talked about it, but sometime you have to quit talking and start doing.
I think when you start talking about headhunters and lobbyists, I think the ones who make the most sense initially, and we're already paying them and paying them well, are our state representatives.
That's correct.
And our congressional district representatives. These are the people, to my way of thinking, and I know that some of them, in some of their respective offices, represent a very large landmass, but nonetheless, those should be our first line, as far as a broader stroke of looking at people who can help us.
That's right.
Obviously, we are in the middle of both of those races right now, Congressional District 2, as well as State Representative District 5. And both of those representatives representing Washington County where we sit today. Is there anything else that you could add? Obviously, we've had discussions in the past. You have now moved past that primary election. You've got a couple of months ahead of you. You've got basically nine weeks till the general election. Is there anything else that you would add, that you would like for our viewers to know about you and any other reasons why they should consider your candidacy?
I believe it's time that, first of all, we need to put someone in there who has never been in the county government business before. You stay there long enough, you get asphyxiated on a certain way and a certain way only of doing things. And it's the same thing every four years. We have to look at someone who can bring the county together under one mindset, who has the ability to do that. And people ask me all the time, say, what will you do? You know, I can't forecast the future of what's going to happen here in this county in the next year, two or three years. But I can forecast what I can do within those possibilities. I tell people, if you want to know what type of county commissioner I'll be in the future, check me out in this county for the last 35 years and see what I have done in this county to help the people, and that will be indicative of what I'll do in the future if you'll vote for me. And I'm not afraid of you checking my lifestyle out. I'm not afraid of you looking in my past to see what I've done to help, not to make money, but to help the people in this county. And once you look at that and you say, this person's heart is right where it's supposed to be. I'm not in this for the money. I'm retired. I believe our county is growing so much, a part-time county commissioner is totally useless in a position that has to be full-time. And that's what I'm offering. Honesty, integrity, truthfulness, and full-time county commissioner.
Thank you for taking the time today.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it.
I'd like to extend the opportunity, somewhere down the road, maybe another month or five or six weeks, come back in, maybe speak a little bit more to catch us up with what you're hearing out there on the streets, how the campaign is going, and maybe visit with you once again.
I would love to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our guest today has been James Guy, currently running for Washington County Commissioner, District 5, another in our series of Meet the Candidates, your opportunity to become a more informed, educated voter, in this case, virtually meeting James. Hopefully, over the next eight or nine weeks prior to the general election, you'll have the opportunity to meet with James. He's going to be burning a lot of shoe leather, knocking on a lot of doors, as will many of the other candidates. But if you don't have that opportunity, hopefully through this venue, you do have that opportunity to hear, in James's own words, the reasons why you should consider his candidacy. We appreciate you as a viewer. We appreciate you following our show. We have had a lot of people, frankly, during this political season, come to us, thanking us for the opportunity, through this Meet the Candidates sessions, to do just that, to actually hear from especially some of the state and federal position candidates. actually hear from especially some of the state and federal position candidates, who typically are not necessarily going to have that presence in the community to the extent where everybody's going to get a chance to meet them. But stay tuned, we'll have more of these Meet the Candidates sessions going forward. We'll be right back.